Good morning, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Oviu and Scrutiny Management Board. My name is councillor Robert Parker. Certainly. I won't repeat the stars, but I hope it's still a good morning. Okay. My name's Robert Parker. I'm chair of the Oviu and Scrutiny Management Board. Welcome to all members of the meeting, officers included, who are in attendance today. The video feed of this meeting is being broadcast live via the county council website. I'd also like to welcome the members of the press and public who may be watching our meeting online today. Because this meeting has been streamlined in the usual way, I want to remind everybody here that your comments will remain accessible online and can be reported by the media. So that means that if you're making any asides, make sure that your microphone is switched off. I'd like to welcome members of the executive councillors and support councillors attending today. Martin Hill, I'm sure will be joining us as leader of the council, and councillor Mark Whittington, executive support councillor for resources and commissioning, is also attending, together with Richard Bootroyd, executive councillor for people management, and also councillor Hilton Spratt here, who's executive support councillor for people management, legal and corporate. Okay. Can I also welcome the members of the corporate leadership team who are present today. Councillor Debbie Barnes, chief executive, Andrew Crookham, executive director of resources, Andrew Gutherson, executive director of place for coming for item seven only, and Heather Sandy, executive director for children's services, who's coming for item seven as well, but via Teams. As usual, I want to begin with a health and safety announcement. There's no fire drill today, so in the event of a fire alarm sounding, we do need to leave the council chamber through the doors behind the back of the room and leave the building through reception into the front car park. We can then wait for instructions. Can I remind everyone to ensure their mobiles and devices are on silent? Also, when invited to speak, can you please ensure that you switch on your microphone? Otherwise, people attending the meeting via Teams and members of the press and public listening to our meeting won't be able to hear you. Please be aware that you need to speak directly into the microphone to be heard. If you want to speak during the meeting, can you please follow the usual procedure? Raise your hand and the vice chair, Tom Smith, will make a note for you to speak. Okay, so that's the beginning of the meeting. If we move to the agenda, we'll begin with item one, apologies for absence and replacement members. Emily, do we have any apologies or replacement members today?
Thank you, chairman. We've received apologies from Megan Machin, Martin Kyle and Glenn Garrid, executive director adult care and community wellbeing. Can I also just note that councillor Dilks will be a bit late? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item two, declarations of councillors' interests. Members of the Oviu and Scrutiny Management Board are reminded that they only need to declare any relevant interest which has not been declared previously on your declaration of pecuniary interest forms. Does any member wish to declare another interest? No? Okay, fine, three. We move to item three on the agenda, which is the minutes of the meeting which we hold on the 26th of January. This is to confirm and sign the minutes from the last meeting of the board, and I'm going to be signing them as a true and accurate record. Do I have a proposal and a second of the minutes?
I'll propose it, chairman.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Is anybody who was present at the meeting willing to second? Thank you, Rob. Okay. If we just do the usual thing, which is to just go through the papers to ensure that people do know what they're signing, for each of the items, each of the pages. So if we go to page one, okay, of the minutes, page two, page three, page four, page five, page six and page seven. Okay, so that's what we've been asked to sign. Okay, all those in favour to say that this is a true and accurate record? Please indicate. Thank you. Anybody against? Anybody abstaining? No, thank you. The minutes then.
Yes, an abstention, chairman.
There's an abstention. Thank you very much.
Two, sir, councillor Malphite.
Thanks, Eddie. Anybody else?
Councillor Malphite abstains, he wasn't present.
Thank you, Hugo. Okay, moving on from item three to item four, announcements by the chair, executive councillors and chief officers. I'll begin with my announcements. A couple of points I want to make. First of all, it's a heavy agenda today. We've got five pre-decision scrutiny items to be considered. I just want to remind both officers and members, the officers presenting the paper, if you could at least note that the papers have been circulated, we can take them as read, and therefore you only need to summarise the key points in the report. That will give more time for members to ask questions and further debate each item. The second point is that the vice chair attended the last meeting, the executive, on the 7th of February, to present the comments from the board and the scrutiny committees on the council's budget proposals. It seems a long time ago that does. The executive was advised that the budget proposals for the service areas had been supported by all the scrutiny committees. The executive was also advised further that on the financial risks facing children's services, which had been explored in detail at the Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee, the problems being created by short-term funding in adult social care and the package of measures for highways would be funded by the additional £7 million allocated in the council's budget. Okay, so that's announcements from myself. Any executive councillors want to make any announcements today? Anything you want to say on behalf of anybody? Okay, fine. Councillor Malphite, councillor Bootroyd, no. Okay. Any chief officers' announcements? This is the next item.
Nothing from me, thank you very much.
Nothing from me, chair, either, thanks.
That's kind of you. Thank you. Okay, so that's dealt with. Item four, consideration of call-ins. Emily, any call-ins to consider?
No, none received, chairman.
Thank you. Item six is consideration of councillors' calls for action.
None received, chairman.
Emily, none? Okay, thank you. Okay, so that's item six. Okay. We now move on to the substantive part of the agenda, Corporate Plan Success Framework. This is quarter three. This item is for pre-decision scrutiny. It goes to the executive on the 7th of March. The report will be given by Caroline Jackson, head of corporate performance. Caroline, over to you.
Thank you, chairman. So page 15 in your pack is the start of the report. I will try and keep it as succinct as possible. So it does outline, obviously, the performance of our priorities in the corporate plan at the end of quarter three, so December 2022. We also have the measure that OSMB has specific responsibility for, which is the Vinci Facilities Partnership Contract, and you'll see that there has been an improvement in quarter three reporting, and any issues that have been raised have been dealt with through the contractual process. In terms of the corporate plan itself, so from page 19 onwards, you'll find a full list of all of the activities and key performance indicators within the report, and the activity details can be found on page 53 in Annex A. And obviously, all of this is on the council's website. In terms of the activities, we report 33 activities in this report, of which 30 are progressing as planned and three are progressing within agreed limits. So the three that are amber rated relate to our green master plan, the delivery of our interim report on the key lines of inquiry for the energy options analysis study, and the final one is around projects contained in our digital strategy. There are no activities that are not progressing as planned, so red rag rated this quarter. Before I talk about specific key performance indicators, I just want to reference page 49, section 4.7, where there's some full details of changes that we've made since quarter two, partly in response to some of the discussions we had at the last quarter's executive meeting. These specifically relate to reviewing the names of the adult care and community wellbeing key performance indicators to make them more user-friendly, more understandable, and there's a full list of the changes in there. We also have public health data that there was a delay on reporting because it's a nationally reported dataset, and similarly with crime data, that's also included in this report, which wasn't available in quarter two. In terms of the quarter two key performance indicators, there are 23 that we report on in this report. Seventy-four per cent of these are either exceeding or achieving their targets, which is a really positive impact. This is a 1% increase on the quarter two reporting. This is a really positive picture, as we know, some of these targets continue to be challenging in the current environment. The four key performance indicators that are exceeding their targets are represented by the gold star. One of those measures was not exceeding in quarter two and is now exceeding, which is the percentage of eligible two-year-olds in receipt of their early years entitlement. So really positive picture to see a shift in that performance, which often we do see in the latter part of the calendar year because of the academic year and older siblings going back to school and younger siblings taking up their entitlement at two years old. There are 13 measures reported in quarter three that achieved their target, so those represented by a green tick. Again, very positive. Two to just mention are the two new measures that have been agreed around reporting around adult safeguarding, so that safeguarding cases supported by an advocate where that's appropriate, and also concluded safeguarding inquiries where the desired outcomes were achieved. So they are reported in this report for the first time. In terms of our contextual measures, so those where the exec director agrees a rag rating, all of the contextual measures are rag rated green and full details are in the report. In terms of the measures not achieving their target, these are the same six measures that we weren't achieving their target in quarter two, so they are the same measures in quarter three. In terms of what we would like to update on, specifically around the Ofsted outcomes for schools, so the good and outstanding schools, there's details on page 37 of the report around the updates that have been given to both group leaders and district councils around the role of the local authority within the school system, and there's details contained within the report. We've also included on page 39 a wider explanation around the waste measures that we debated at length at the previous meetings, and I'm going to hand over to Andy Gutherson, exec director for place, and Mike Reed, head of waste, for a further explanation around the waste measures specifically.
Thanks. Who's going to go first?
Just very quickly to put it into context, obviously, at the last, I think, the last two OSMBs, there's been quite a lot of detailed questions in relation to the waste agenda. It felt like it was an opportune moment to try and put it into a wider context so that there isn't necessarily a repetition of the debate and discussion that takes place at the E and E scrutiny committee and again at this panel. And I think hopefully Mike's presentation will provide the context and understanding of how the waste indicators need to be considered in the round and as a package, rather than each of them in isolation. If that then gives rise to particular asks and questions from this board to then feed back into E and E, then that maybe provides a better, more appropriate framework for those conversations to take place, but I'll hand over to Mike to go through some of the detail.
Before you start, Mike, I think one of the two key questions are, when are these figures going to improve and what stopping us improving immediately? So. Yeah, Mike?
Thank you, chairman. Thank you, Andy. Would it be possible, Nigel, just put those couple of slides up, please? Thank you. So I'll try and keep this brief because I don't want to overcomplicate things. I realise you've got a heavy agenda this morning. So in terms of the waste hierarchy, this is the methodology by which we are required by law to deal with waste, and at the top of that hierarchy, we have prevention, so that is not collecting, not disposing of waste and trying to avoid that wherever we can by influencing the public. I won't go through these line by line, but at the bottom end, we have the worst scenario, which is waste disposal, which is potentially going to landfill. And on the right-hand side of this chart, you can see where we've got the four KPIs that we are regularly measured on. So at the top, we have the amount of household waste that is collected. In the middle, we have the overall recycling rate, so that includes the household waste recycling centres and the curbside collections. And then below that, we have household waste recycling centre rate itself, which feeds into the one above it. And then at the bottom, we have the amount of material which actually goes to landfill. So of these four KPIs that we measure, to me, the two most important are the top one, the amount of waste collected, because if we can minimise that, then ultimately we are achieving the highest step on the hierarchy. And the most damaging on this is the landfill at the bottom, because ultimately this is all about reducing the amount of material which goes to landfill. In the middle, the two recycling rate issues are the two ones which are slightly more nuanced and complexed in how they're put together and what they demonstrate. So two points I want to make about these recycling rates is that firstly, we don't control the recycling rates. The recycling rate is essentially the amount of material as a proportion of the overall material that is presented to us. So this is what the public present to the household waste recycling centres are actually putting their wheelie bins. We can influence that and try and educate people, but ultimately it's about what we receive. And secondly, apart from the control element, is that these don't necessarily demonstrate good or bad performance in terms of a high recycling rate being better necessarily than a lower recycling rate, which, if we can just move on to the next slide, please, Nigel, this in a crude way demonstrates what I'm trying to say in terms of recycling rates not necessarily demonstrating good or bad performance, because from these four different, these four scenarios, if we take the top line of material which goes to the energy from waste facility, that is classed as recovery. It's not recycling, it's not as good as recycling. So on the second line below that, we have the amount of material which is going to recycling, and the third line is basically a summation of the two lines above. So looking at the four different scenarios, there is an increase in recycling rate depending on how much material is collected and fits into these four different categories, into these two different categories, sorry. So if you look at first option, there's 500,000 tonnes of material which is collected. None of that goes for recycling. It all goes for incineration. That will give us a 0% recycling rate. I won't go through each option, but the fourth option, if we have 500,000 tonnes of material which goes to the incinerator, we could have 1.5 million tonnes which gets recycled, giving an overall tonnage of 2 million tonnes, and that will give us a 75% recycling rate, which on the face of it looks good, looks excellent. However, in terms of the waste hierarchy, just thinking back to the triangle from the previous slide, we're actually producing more waste and disposing of material. So just coming back to the second slide again, thanks, thank you, Nigel. The actual, the best option on here in terms of the waste hierarchy is option two, because that has less material presented. So we're disposing of less material, which has a cost financially and environmentally. We have less material presented, but it's only third in terms of recycling rate performance. So the option four, which has got the best recycling rate in terms of the waste hierarchy, is actually the third best scenario, because we're still collecting 2 million tonnes of material. All that material has to be disposed of at cost, whether it's at the end disposal outlet or whether it's in haulage. So all of that has an environmental and a financial cost. So a 75% recycling rate is actually the third best scenario on this. I'll try and wrap it up now by just coming up with a recent scenario that we've had with the amount of garden waste that we've had in this last quarter. Because of the very dry summer, the very dry year, we've had 7,000 tonnes less of material presented garden waste, which is excellent, because in terms of the hierarchy, that's less material presented. So 7,000 tonnes doesn't have to be hauled around, it doesn't have to have a cost associated with that and also disposed of at a cost. However, because we've got 7,000 tonnes of less compostable material, which contributes to the recycling rate, our recycling rate is dropping by 1% because we've got less material presented, and that basically demonstrates the whole argument in a nutshell. So recycling rates, they are an indication of performance where you're considering the same households and the same amount of material is being presented, but when you do get this fluctuation in overall amount of material which is presented, there is a grey area and they are not, we need to consider the wider context of this. And I'll wrap it up there, but I'll just, yeah, I'll open it up if there's any questions. Thank you, chairman.
Sure. I think what you've done has set a hair running yet again, and I mean that in a positive sense. Can we just assume that the government, for once, in this particular set of circumstances, know what it wants to do, what it wants to achieve? That presumably the government have set these targets. Okay, so we're to an extent significantly, from what you've said, are harping about the validity of these targets. Okay, so, A, what can we do about that? And two, can we have alternative targets that would fit your criteria and give us something that's meaningful? And to what extent is the real validity in what the government is doing? Okay.
Thank you, chairman. Government are doing a lot, putting a lot of pressure and mandating quite a few changes through the New Environment Act. One of these, which has recently been announced, is the separate collection mandated. We have to collect and dispose of separate food waste in 2025. That will have an impact on recycling rates, because if we take food waste out of the residual black bin, which currently gets incinerated, that will then be recycled in a different way, possibly through anaerobic digestion, and we're predicting that that will change our recycling performance by 7% once the county and all the partners have separate collection and disposal of food waste. So that's something positive. The government are also introducing enhanced producer responsibility on reducing packaging waste. Government are bringing forward a deposit return scheme whereby drinking vessels are taken back to the vendor where they're taken from and actually recycled more effectively. So there's lots of different initiatives going on, but I think one thing that we need to be mindful of is this is all about what we can provide on the ground for the public in terms of ability to recycle. So, for example, at a recycling centre, we have 25 different waste streams which we can collect and dispose of at the 11 recycling centres. As a consequence of that, we have a over 70% recycling rate. At the curbside, you may have three or four wheelie bins, and yet our recycling rate there is lower than 40%, and that's because people don't have the same opportunity to split, segregate material and recycle better. So and there is an argument about how many bins we give people or the district councils give people. So it's all about enabling the public to do better. So there are changes which are imminent, which we're now working on, and we'll be working close with the waste collection authorities as part of the waste partnership. So I think it is, there are good initiatives that we need to really work on, and I think just coming back to one of your points, was it around timescale? I think this is something which, it is a moving feast, so we can't, we can't put any timescales on performance because so much of this is outside of our control. But once the government initiatives are implemented, I think we will see some real change. But I can't remember if there's any questions that I haven't answered, chairman.
Hugo.
Morning, chairman. Thank you. The trouble is with this, it's quite interesting. I mean, take food waste. Lamb bone, a beef bone, is classified as a food waste, yet technically you're never going to be able to eat it, and it will incinerate and produce energy. Likewise, if I chuck a cabbage out from the fridge, that technically is real food waste, but it's still classified the same as a bone, food waste. Then we go to the food industry, which I am involved with, and we talk about packaging. Sainsbury's the other day is looking at changing the way it's going to sell its mince, and it's vacuum packed now, and it won't be in a pre-pack with a plastic tray. That saves 450 tonnes of plastic just on that initiative. And so we sort of sit here and think, actually, how do we adapt to all these changes that are going to happen through evolution? And the supermarket's no doubt one of the biggest places that we get a lot of packaging from. Amazon and all of that's quite clean packaging. So in effect, we need to perhaps look at more, how do we make sure that we're actually doing a better job, rather than trying to react to KPIs where we've sort of had a shortfall on, say, grass cuttings or whatever, and actually look at how do we maximise the best? So when I go to recycle, which is the household, actually half the rubbish that we're recycling doesn't want to be recycled, it's better off going in the energy from waste plant. And actually, and if we get the consumer really focused properly and efficient, yeah, we've got some of the best recycling centres in the country. You know, you go into any of our recycling centres, I mean, they're brilliant. You can drop off what you like, where you like, when you like, pretty much. You know, I don't think anybody can fault our recycling centres, but sometimes you do go there and everything just gets chucked into the energy from waste plant as well. So I think we need to use the energy from waste plant, and it's a shame you haven't actually got it on your hierarchy bit, because landfill is in effect the ultimate sin, but energy from waste technically does produce energy. How efficient we are at selling it on is a different thing, but I think in some sense I would say we need to get our recycling the best it is. Stop people putting in plastic that's like cling film and wraps and all the rubbish. Let that get into energy from waste and really clean up your plastics. We've cleaned up now the cardboard element, and I hope, you know, they're the sort of elements that we should be looking at so that we can get the maximum return with the least expense that we have to lay out on those situations. And I just think at times, everybody, every bit is recyclable, but every bit we can't recycle, and it has to be split out, so many different avenues to capitalise and maximise that we'd be better just actually focusing on really what we can make money on and have that recycled in the plastics and metals and tins properly, and make sure every other bit of rubbish, because that will die out in the end through the supermarkets and the government strategy. And then we're always left with really good, clean, sellable items. I mean, that would be the way I look at this. I think sometimes if we don't watch it, we'd knee-jerk react to KPIs, and actually, it's not really the main leader that we should be really focusing on.
Thank you. Jackie's next, and then I'd like the chief executives to have a think about why we've got six targets that we're not achieving. So that gives you a pause for thought.
Thank you very much, chairman. I've got three quick questions, if I may, please. Well, I'll do the waste one first. I think this triangle is very, very helpful, because certainly as a passionate recycler, I find that I concentrate on recycling and reuse, and I haven't given enough attention to prevention. But for prevention to be successful, we really do need people in the commercial sector to work with us. So after reading this report, I shall go away and do some more reading to see how, you know, I can personally, because it always starts with one person, doesn't it? You just have to do it bit by bit. But I do feel that perhaps a little bit more information on prevention, so when I go and buy something and it's packaged in three layers of cardboard, is it appropriate for me to unpack it at the till and to hand it to the cashier? That did happen for a while, but all that has died a death now, and it's almost as if prevention has been forgotten about, so I think this is a very timely reminder. Thank you. I wanted to ask about particulates, which were on page 47. Some of the data that we've got in this very good report, very user-friendly, thank you for that, in this report is actually quite old, 2021. I understand that, but on page 47, it's talking about particulates in the air based on 2020 data. Now, we had the pandemic when particulates were going to be much lower, so I wonder, is it possible to obtain any more recent figures? Because if that is a false low on the basis of what's happening now, it skews our thinking on it. So if I could ask if there are any more recent figures? And my last question is, there was a reference to mental health issues being the largest component of sickness, and I wondered if that is because people are now more comfortable about simply saying that they are suffering from mental health issues, or because there has been an increase, an actual increase? And if so, is that a factor because of work or home? So that's a multifaceted question. It's the increase, basically why? So three comments there. So three comments there. One, prevention, which is really a comment. The second about particulates, recent figures. And the third one about mental health. Is it comfortable or is it worse? And is it work and home or a combination of everything? Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. In terms of the pollution, that is a national dataset. So we are at the behest, if you like, of when that data is released. And I'll certainly go away and we will update the next report when the next data is available. So at least we know we've got a timeline around that. I don't know, Tony, if you want to comment around the mental health?
Yep, thank you. In terms of the mental health absences, yeah, it is the highest, but in quarter three it has decreased. In terms of prevention around mental health, as you're probably aware, we do have a number of interventions from an organisational perspective to assist and try and prevent or support individuals who are suffering from mental health. I do think the point around stigma and that stigma reducing and people being more open is probably quite a relevant factor in terms of people being more willing to be open about their mental health status. And the fact that the council is quite proactive and supportive around that, I think, can only be a positive factor in both senses. In terms of the reasons, whether they are work-related or personal or other issues outside of work, they tend to be a mixture of both. I don't have the figures in front of me, but I can get those for you. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm sure we all agree that we all want to see us doing as best we possibly can do. We have KPIs, and here we've got six of them, and they're not achieving their ambition. Now, either we're setting too high a target, or things aren't going as well as we want them to, and we all want them to. So this isn't a party political issue. I just wonder, from a chief executive point of view, what more can we do? And obviously include Andy in that as the... So what can we do? Okay.
Great. Thank you very much. So as you said, there's a range of targets, a range of performance indicators that we're not achieving targets on. So there's six in total, a number of those we've already touched upon. So we set, I think it would be fair to say, targets for things that we have a direct control over, such as the complaints one. And we also set targets where we would influence rather than have direct control on. And I think that that refers to the first two in terms of the percentage of schools that are good or outstanding. So I know that this matter has been to the Children and Young People Scrutiny Committee. I know that it's been debated extensively at Executive as well. And given that a significant number of our schools are academies, and obviously it is the regional schools commissioners is accountable and responsible for the performance of those schools. So it is an influencing target, and clearly we work through the regional schools commissioner to look at how we can, or how the regional schools commissioner can work with those schools to enhance the standards. Currently, through the Department for Education, the strategy for inadequate schools tend to be to broker alternative leadership through finding an alternative trust to lead the school. And obviously, we try and work with the regional schools commissioner to make sure that the trusts that they choose to take leadership of that school actually suits Lincolnshire and will work with the authority in terms of supporting the needs of vulnerable children and actually have the skills and capability to be able to drive improvement. But it's an influencing role, not a direct control role in terms of what we do. I think that our targets are ambitious. I think they should be rightly ambitious. We should be ambitious for all of our children to go to a good or outstanding school. And certainly the performance targets demonstrate that, but we'll know that a whole raft of things happen within those schools, which has meant that they haven't achieved good or outstanding, and in some cases have proved inadequate, which, as I say, I know has been reported to children's scrutiny in terms of the range of factors that impacted upon those. Obviously, where we are with the recycling rate, Mike has gone through in detail in terms of why we're not achieving those two rates. Partly, one of them is clearly due to the weather and the dry summer that we've had. And then Tony has obviously referred to the one around sickness as well. The other one is around percentage of contacts that, sorry, percentage of complaints that are resolved through early resolution is not where we want it to be, because we want to work with people to prevent a complaint and respond promptly to them so that we can respond to things as early as possible to prevent them needing to access the complaints procedure. Because of the volume of complaints that we have had, we haven't been able to cope with the demand and resolve as many as quickly as we want to do. In terms of resolution, we want to achieve it within three to five days. If it's not addressed within three to five days, then it goes into the formal complaints procedure, because that's the timeline that we set for early resolution. We have put additional resources into the complaints team. We've also done a lot of work with our managers, because the complaints team need to go through the manager to get the relevant investigation done and the relevant answer in order to be able to respond. So we have put additional resources into that. We are, we have worked with the managers around that, but that is an area that we continue to look at how we can make sure that we drive as much early intervention as possible. And there's a number of other strategies that we're looking at to try and achieve that. But obviously, we're hoping that the additional capacity will begin to have an impact as well.
Thank you. councillor Jock, Phil.
Thanks very much, Mr Chairman, and apologies, I was a little late arriving. I think, just following from colleague councillor Jackie was absolutely right. And I walked in halfway through the waste presentation and just found it fascinating. Prevention is, of course, the key. It's about reducing the amount of waste rather than recycling it. And I thought it was interesting to hear why, you know, that helps explain why the recycling rates might be sort of falling partly anyway. It always strikes me, though, that this business about, and you explained that the, because it's been a dry summer and people haven't put so much garden waste out, or, you know, they didn't have it, that that actually hits our recycling rate. It always strikes me that we have it sort of the wrong way round, and we should be encouraging people not to, we make it too easy for people to put their garden waste out, in my view. And the garden waste belongs on the garden, in my view, and people should discover compost heaps. You know, it's an old theory, but it's worked a long time. And actually, I believe taking stuff off the garden is wrong for the, it doesn't do your soil any good at all, and it belongs on the garden. It should be recycled within your own garden. On the extra packaging that Jackie sort of talked about, I accept that supermarkets have gone a long way, you know, on accepting the message on packaging. But I would still urge people, if you're not happy with the packet, with the amount of packaging when you get to the till, unpack it at the till and leave the packet, the excess packaging at the till, and tell them to deal with it, because you don't want to buy it. Final point, just on academies, picking up on what the chief executives said, and the fact that I accept, of course, that we no longer have direct control over those schools. I've just got a theory, and I think in about 10 years' time, whoever's in government is going to come up with an amazing idea, and they're going to get local authorities to run schools. Thank you.
Motionary. Okay. So, anybody else? Tom?
Thank you, Chairman, and with your indulgence, I have quite a few points. I'll start backwards, if I may, because the recycling point's been mentioned. And councillor Marpley mentioned in part what I was going to say, but my question really is, when was the hierarchy last reviewed? Because I appreciate it's set by central government, but to me, it seems paradoxical that we are being told, instead of putting something in energy from waste plant, which is less intensive in terms of our energy use and actually generates energy, oh, we have to recycle it, which takes energy to recycle, then takes energy to be made into something else. Surely it would be better, energy-wise and by extension for the environment, actually if more went to the energy from waste plant rather than a fixation on recycling, which sometimes can be very, very energy-intensive and the product can't last very long, because it's a single-use product in more cases than not. Complaints have been mentioned, Chairman, but what I was going to mention is, it's all well and good having a percentage, and the chief execs alluded to the timeframe for early resolution. I think at least on a bi-quarterly basis, if we had a flavour of what some of these complaints were, identifiers and personal things redacted for obvious reasons. Because, for example, if the complaint is, oh, I want a pothole fixing, well, a pothole to be fixed, more often than not, unfortunately, it's going to take more than three to five days to fix. So you're never going to get that complaint early resolutionised, are you? Unless you're very fortunate and the team happens to be that way, and they're fixing that pothole. And much like the same with school transport, you will always get elevated complaints around when a new term starts and contracts and things, and then things sort of patter into a more sort of regularised, percentage and regularised form. But you'll always get peaks and troughs. On the issue of superfast broadband, which is mentioned in the report, Chairman, what's being done to reach those hard-to-reach places that are not spots to ensure, as per His Majesty's government's legislation, the universal service right to at least 20 megabits per second broadband is achieved for residents of Lincolnshire? We must ensure as much as we possibly can as an authority that no resident is left on what I call snail mail, which is akin to dial-up, which is something I have at the moment, Chairman. So I fully understand when residents say, it's like treacle, because I live with it daily. And finally, Chairman, I note with interest the plan for greater integration between LCC home-to-school transport policy and school admissions. However, how is this likely to be achieved in a meaningful way when, as has already been alluded to, a number of our, a majority of our schools are academies and free schools, and LCC has no direct influence over admission policy? And I appreciate it's more of an influence role, but how is that influence going to be leveraged? Thank you, Chairman.
You, Tom. Anyone else wants to speak?
Yeah.
Mike?
Thank you, Chairman, and so thank you for the report. It is easily read and very interesting. I've got a question about the recycling rate, and it's basically, do we still have the same problems that we had in the past with contamination of our recycled material, i.e. the bin that's, the plastics and things go in, the wrong stuff going in there, or unclean material going in there? Because I know it was a big problem at one time, and we used to get a lot of loads rejected by our contractors when it got to the waste facility. So I just, because these numbers here don't tell me that. So I just wondered if that was still a big problem or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. In response, we do still monitor contamination rates for the material, mixed dry recycled material. We still experience it, but it is slightly improved. And what we've found in the areas where we've further separated out paper and card, where residents have received a new wheelie bin to have paper and card recycled separately, what we've found is that there's been an impact on the material which goes into the normal mixed dry recycled bin. Because what, the only thing we can conclude is that the education and the engagement that we've carried out as part of the paper and card collection project, the extra work and effort that we've put in in talking to the public and schools, it's actually paying dividends with the other materials that we hadn't foreseen. So we knew that we would get better, cleaner paper and card, which has more value coming out of the mixed material, so you don't get this cross-contamination. But something we didn't foresee is, the material that's left is actually slightly cleaner in the districts where we've rolled out this project as well. And it's one thing that is shifting some of our focus now onto engaging more with the public. I think we've kind of taken a bit of a backseat on that in the last few years, but I think it's something that we can ramp up again. And we've started a, with this in mind, we've started a recent programme for better engagement with schools. So we've got the same teams that are running the project, going around to schools to talk about waste prevention, minimisation and contamination. So it's given us food for thought, but I think it's, yeah, it's very much a moving feast. But I think we're heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, Mike?
Just a quick follow-up to that. Those, if there's contaminated loads and they get rejected, how are they counted? Because obviously, they were collected at the curbside as recyclable. So I'm just wondering, on these numbers on recycling rate, how are those loads counted? Are they taken off these numbers or not? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Where we have contaminated material which goes, which is collected and goes to the end processor, that is identified at the processor and essentially it might have to be taken out and incinerated, and that's where we get the proper data. If something is rejected at the curbside, we give a warning to the resident that gives them the ability to change what's happened at curbside. And they're so insignificant, those figures, that what we find is that residents have been very good in kind of changing the behaviour and just addressing that situation. So when it happens at curbside, it's, we don't report on it because the numbers are minuscule, but of the overall material that does end up at the facility, because it's already been collected, we have that performance figure, which we do get regular updates on. Thank you.
Sorry, is that then deducted from the recycle tonnage?
It is, yes.
And presumably, does that go then into energy from waste? Or where does it, where does that number go?
The material, and I should have mentioned this earlier, but the material which goes through the energy from waste facility is classed as recovery on the waste hierarchy. So it's not landfill, it's better than that because we're generating energy. So any contaminated material which is not recycled essentially gets recycle, gets energy recovery via a F W-type process. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Last, Rob.
Yes, thanks, Mr Chairman. Just one of the comments regarding schools, and councillor has mentioned the situation with schools. I am well aware that our officers work closely with schools, but obviously, the situation being, most of them being academies, it is perhaps more of an arms-length relationship. And we look to the regional commissioner to oversee that. So it is a sort of mixed situation, really, as it, very different to when I was last on the county council back in the late 90s, and we still had an education committee and we managed schools directly. So, but I do, I am well aware that our officers do work with schools and give support to schools. I just thought I'd mention that, Chairman. Thanks.
Oi, point, thank you. Councillor Carrington.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a final brief comment on the waste numbers. I take this morning's conversation with colleagues in a very positive way. I think there has been a little concern emerging that the reporting to this board has been, in statistical terms, diverging a little bit from the work that's being done at E and E. And I think it's very important that when we look at waste, we have an agreed, common set of standards. Now, I'm not for a moment suggesting that this management board should not ask questions. It is the board that scrutinises, scrutiny is right that it should. But equally, I think that it's important that those processes happen in an efficient way without unnecessary duplication. But crucially, that when we look at statistics, when we look at the data that reports any particular thing, I'm just citing waste because it's topical this morning, that we do have between this management board and the relevant scrutiny committee, a commonality of data and a common understanding of the way in which we're using that. So I take, I know the officers have put a lot of work into this, which I commend them for, and I take this morning's views from this board as a very positive thing. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks for that, Ian. Anybody else? Okay. Right, well, I think one of the points, I mean, we've got three recommendations. Sorry. Sorry, I missed who you said.
Sorry, just in answer to a question that councillor Smith posed, the waste hierarchy was introduced in 1975.
That explains all I need to know, then.
Right. Andy, sorry.
Sorry, thank you. It's just to come back on a couple of other points that councillor Smith made, just to say that in terms of the complaints, an annual report goes to audit committee, but again, we could do that more frequently if the committees wish, and that may be something that the meetings of the OSMB and Audit Committee may wish to discuss. of the OSMB and Audit Committee may wish to discuss. And then the point around the transport and the education, you're absolutely right, the admissions policies are set by the school, but we coordinate the September intake. So I think the intention is to make sure and to improve parents' ability to understand which schools, if any, they would be entitled to free transport at point of application. So I think that's where we step in to make sure people understand it. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else, finally? No, okay, so if we just go back to page 15, we've got three actions that we've been asked to do. Consider the attached report and to determine whether the board supports the recommendations to the executive. I'm sure we agree on that. Agree, any additional comments? And that's, this is the key one, it seems to me. And review and comment on the performance information, that's within the remit of the board. I think it's fair to say that in summing up, that we are very interested in improving the recycling rates, and we are an overview and scrutiny management board, and we're bringing to the attention of the executive, because that's where the paper's going, our interests and concerns, and a feeling that perhaps while lots of good work is being done, even more could be done in order to improve the performance, the performance that we're getting. So I'm sure the officers will have captured the contents of our discussion today. Martin's here, that's where it's heading to the executive. So there are the three actions required that I read out. Are all those in favour, please indicate. Those against? Anybody abstaining? No, that's fine, thank you. If we could then move on to, excuse me, item seven. Sorry, item. Item eight. Procurement of software reseller in strategic partnership and provision of software licence and related services, quite a heady title. Okay, this item is for pre-decision scrutiny to a decision by the executive councillor for highways transport, and the report's going to be given by Andrew Crookham. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. So, yeah, as you'll be aware from all the kit that you use, we are a Microsoft estate in terms of everything that we use on our laptops, iPad devices and whatever else we work on, and obviously rely quite heavily on that Microsoft kit as operating our daily business in terms of the way that we work. That's not just the kit that you use in the background, we rely heavily on storage and various other things in terms of the way that we operate. So this report sets out a procurement route for the licensing of all of those products. Each and every user in the council has a licence to be able to use Microsoft kit. And the way that Microsoft work with the market is around a process of reselling, so we don't work directly with Microsoft, we have to go through a third-party reseller, and that's what this process sets out. So the current arrangements with Softcat, our incumbent supplier, end at the end of June, and we are seeking endorsement to go through the rest of the democratic process to find a new supplier as part of that procurement route. And the report sets out in detail the steps that we've been through. We're pretty confident that the market that's out there will ensure that we can receive best value and best quality from that process, and that is the presentation, Chair. I've taken your steer on being brief, but for information, I have got Steve Campbell, our IT category manager from the commercial team, to support for any technical questions. Thank you.
Right, so do you want to add anything? Sorry, the officer that's in support, anything to add to what Andrew has said?
No, nothing from me, thank you.
Okay, questions? Yeah, councillor Brockway.
Thank you, Chairman, it's just a quick one. It's on point 12 on page 71. You talked about the way that bidder submissions are evaluated on a 50% price, 50% quality split, which seems immensely sensible. Does that actually mean, then, that you have the flexibility within the procurement process to ensure best quality, not necessarily going for the cheapest? Thank you.
Of course, yes, with it being a 50-50 split, they will hold equal weighting. So depending on how those numbers sit, there'll be a balance between those two aspects, and that was to recognise that whilst we do want a good degree of support and quality from the supplier, the pricing is fixed by a memorandum of understanding between the government and Microsoft, so it is quite transactional and in that nature, so it was just to balance those two aspects.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? There's a number of suppliers in the market at the moment. What would, have we got, I'm not saying a preferred, but in the sense of the size of the market, what are going to be our key criteria when it comes to deciding between what we hope are a number of good competing providers?
I think just building on Steve's previous response to councillor Brockway, I think it is all focused on the quality of the service that they provide. I don't know if, again, Steve, if you want to add any matters of emphasis to that, but that is the main thrust of what we're hoping to get from the market in going through the process.
I took it for granted that we're looking for quality. At the highest level, there is what one might call not much of a gap between high-qualified providers, and I just wonder what are going to be the key criteria that's going to set out what we might call the excellent from the excellent plus or from the excellent minus?
Of course, yes, so in this regard, it was around the supplier being able to assist us with our licensing requirements and recognising where our licence types or scales might be improved upon, but also where the, which products in the market to resell might be of the best value. So there is an element of this outside of the Microsoft that includes other software, so we can take some of those aspects to them. So those we might be able to get have recommendations from the market on what's the best products out there at the moment. So it's a way of getting that market intelligence, if you like.
In relation to market testing, market involvement, can we make any assessment on what we might find between the quality and value that we get in terms of finance? Is the range likely to be significant?
Well, I wanted to just add a point to the point that Steve made there, actually, is that the paper refers very, very, in a minor way, to rationalisation of our licensing estate. I know that the last scrutiny management board have provided a brief update on developments in IMT in terms of, you know, obviously rebooting the way that we lead and manage the service, and one of the key areas of emphasis this year is around rationalising the way that we do things, whether that's through the kit that we use or the way that we work, and one of those, the best ways that we can ensure maximum value for money for the council is looking at the way that we deploy these licences in relation to this item here, to ensure that we're only deploying licences that give the right tools to individuals in doing the jobs that they do, obviously, i.e. not over-specing the type of licence that we give to individuals. So that's one area where we'd expect to make significant savings, albeit it is a consequence of using Microsoft, not a consequence of this paper. Yeah, but utilizing the support that Steve referred to will allow us to do that in the most effective way.
Thank you, thanks for that. Councillor Hill, Martin.
On this, I mean, obviously, I have been discussions with, have some briefing which I've had, I mean, from my perspective, we are, it's effectively a broker, because that's, we can't deal directly with Microsoft, and it's about how the broker can advise us as to maximise the benefits of Microsoft, but also minimise the cost of having many licences. So I think what I would expect to be looked at is how that, whether they have that expertise and demonstrate elsewhere that they have done that for other organisations. It is all about quality and not the direct price, but I think those two, for me, are the key components of who should be the successful contender.
But is it reasonable to assume that a rationalisation process may, may throw up some savings?
I would hope so, but I, you know, I have experts in the room.
Yes, I'd hope so as well. That is the plan. You know, at the moment, we utilise, most offices of the council are on what's known as the E5 licence, it's the most broadest, I think. The idea is to work through a process by putting different work types or employee types into different, and marry them up to specific licensing requirements to allow us to, as I say, gain better value for money.
Anybody else want to speak on this subject? Okay, if we don't turn to page 69, we can see that the recommendations to the executive councillor, that we approve the award of a contract with a reseller of software and related services with an initial period of, excuse me, three years, et cetera, and then delegates to the deputy chief executive and executive director resources in consultation with the executive councillor for highways transport and IT to determine the identity of a successful reseller. So that's what we're expected to do. Approve the award of a contract and select a reseller. Those in favour of that, please indicate, please. Any objections? Anybody abstaining? Okay, that item is carried. Right, okay, so if we could move on to item nine, people management update quarter three. Tony, Tony Cavanagh, over to you, Tony. HR and organisational support update on the performance of the people management service for quarter three.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. Just a very brief update in terms of the report that you have in front of you. In terms of the HR sort of information metrics, confirmation that sickness absence to the end of quarter three continues on a downward trend, albeit it's on a small steps, but it is still downward, which is pleasing to see. In terms of our retention, our voluntary turnover, this, apologies for this being a bit of a broken record every time I come to this meeting, but it is on static pretty much, it tends to fluctuate month by month, but generally seems to stay between 10 and 11%, which from an industry perspective is reasonable or healthy, as you would say, for a voluntary turnover rate. In terms of our agency spend, that was up in the last quarter. Again, in terms of where that places us as an authority, our agency spend is not significantly high compared to others, and it's, and in terms of its rate and cost to the authority, it's not at a higher rate, or any higher rate than it was before the pandemic. So again, it's that return to, I know overused phrase, but return to normal. In terms of, just to pick out some highlights from the People's Strategy Report, so in terms of attraction retention, just report on a revision to the corporate web pages for our, for the authority in terms of recruitment and retention, an improvement in that, and that's just the start as part of that project, and we'll be moving to a phase two, which also includes the streamlining of recruitment processes to reduce our time to hire apprentices. Some really good news in terms of spend allocation for this, for the next financial year is that we are looking at around 91.5% of the levy being spent, which is really good news for the council, in that we've got a very small, much smaller amount now that goes unused, and the number of apprentices as well has increased to 301 on roll. Just picking up, as I guess, as a positive in respect to the agency discussion, that the agency issue I just raised is that we've just awarded to the agency contractor, Matrix, which should bring down the cost per person of spend as well, so there's a contribution there from that perspective. And then finally, really, just health and wellbeing, we've touched on the mental health support already in this morning, just that the employees' support and councillor team are now providing the health and wellbeing check-ins, and there's the continuing fitness challenges from One New Lincolnshire, who we work with. Finally, there is an update there on equality, diversity, inclusion, and some of the sort of priorities and objectives for the workforce for the next year, and I'll pause there.
Mr. Strangall.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for your report. I'm interested in the sickness levels, pleased that they are reducing, albeit in a small way, but still above the 7.5 target. On page 76, you do mention the impact of COVID-19. Personally, as I got COVID in the first week of December, and I'm still struggling a bit with the, what they call long COVID, I'm just wondering if there's any way we could identify how many of those people with sickness are actually in this particular arena of the impact on COVID, because obviously it does mention in the next paragraph about, you know, cold and flu, and of course, that is a general thing in this, at this time of the year. I'd be interested, it may be an impossible question, but I'd be interested to know how many people are actually struggling because of the long COVID effect, or in fact, COVID itself, so thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, and thank you for your question. In terms of, yes, we can identify COVID absences, I don't have the information right in front of me, but I can provide you with that information. What I can give is a sort of fairly, an overview, really, in the impact of COVID. From previous reports, what we do know is that if we absented the COVID, the reasons for absence being COVID, we would be around the seven-and-a-half percent target. But in terms, and we do know that that impact on the organisation, that COVID absences are reducing, but we did hit a smaller peak towards the end of last year. But I'm able to, I can get the information for you, so we can provide that to the board. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, fine, sorry, Jackie, I think, just ahead.
Just a quick question, thank you very much. In the 8081, in the diagram there, where it shows the loss of staff by voluntary turnover? Am I on? There you go, sorry. On page 8081, where it shows the percentage, well, the actual loss and the percentage loss by directorate, I wonder if I could ask for a tiny bit more information there in the next report, please, which would be, could you actually tell us how many people are in each directorate? Because 12.30% loss looks, you know, quite a chunk by comparison with corporate, but that would depend very much on how many people are in, and that is still a retention rate of 87.7%, which is actually very good. So just that little bit of data would be very helpful. Thank you ever so much.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem at all.
Tom.
Thank you, Chairman, and I caveat this point, provided this isn't scrutinised elsewhere. I think, and I appreciate it's a very new contract, but I think it would be helpful if it isn't scrutinised elsewhere for us as a committee to scrutinise the Matrix contract that Tony's alluded to, so we fill our scrutiny function on this issue, because it's a majorly important contract around agency staff, and it's an ongoing issue that we face as a council. My other question is, in terms of officers' opinion, what is the biggest reason for turnover? Is it pay, conditions, stress, workload, or is it sort of a mixture of all three, and it's different in each individual case? Thank you.
Okay, Andrew, you're going to do.
I'll just come back on the first point about the actual, the contract itself, so we did bring a So we did bring a series of papers through scrutiny the back, well, the middle of last year that was around the actual principles of letting the contract through to Matrix. I'm not sure what the dates were, September feels about right in my head. So the actual principles on which we went through the process were scrutinised by the committee, but Tony will be able to, you know, provide on an ongoing basis in terms of building on the section in this paper around how we get on with them, I think, yeah.
Okay, Tony, yeah.
Thank you. In terms of the second question around turnover and reasons for turnover, generally is a mix of, there will be obviously one that is highest reason for voluntary, for turnover. But generally, that will be, it will be a mix of reasons in terms of why people are leaving or not. Again, I haven't got the information in front of me, but what I can do is provide a breakdown on that, if that would be helpful.
Okay, thanks for that, Tony. Yep, Ian.
Thank you, chairman. Thanks, Mr Cavanagh, for the report. I wanted to just go back specifically to apprentices. It's really good that this council is clearly taking a leadership role in using apprentices. They're important, not only for us, but for the wider workforce and indeed for general productivity. But I wonder if Mr Cavanagh could very briefly just outline how we assess the success of that programme, both overall and with individuals? Are we doing quantitative metrics? Are we doing qualitative analysis? How does that work, very briefly? Thank you, chairman.
Question, thank you.
It's a very good question. I think in terms of, for me, we don't have a set of standard metrics that would, we could, we could measure that, but for me, sitting here and for something to look at for the future, the metric of success is clearly for me is around retention and career progression within the council. And I think that's something we should be, should be measuring where possible, so that we get in a clear, a clear measure that the investment that we're making, the time we're putting in and the support and the recruitment process are producing dividend. Because clearly, a lot of the apprentices that we have, we want them to stay within the organisation and progress. And we know, and I can only comment on this anecdotally for now, we know from a lot of our business support apprentices, that they do stay within the authority, albeit they will move to different directorates outside of business support. But that's only a positive for me in terms of the county council.
Chairman, if I can just come back on that, the last thing I want to do is set up any kind of big bureaucratic information gap. We should only ever gather information that is actionable information. But if there is an efficient way just of looking at this going forward, I think it would help us as an organisation to make sure we're doing the right thing and perhaps also help benchmark external organisations, because apprenticeships are really, really important. Thank you, chairman.
Okay. Yeah, councillor Dylks.
It was just a comment, Mr Chairman, thank you, on the impact of COVID. Frankly, we don't know what the impact of COVID is currently, because we don't test for it generally now. We went through this process of, you know, all going to the chemist and getting loads of tests when they were free, of course, and testing regularly and, you know, yes, the incidents went up. But now, of course, we don't, you know, so I just wonder how many people actually have COVID and don't realise that they've had it until, you know, unless it becomes serious. And those are the incidents that get, you know, picked up. I may be wrong, but just a comment, thank you.
Bit of a difficult question to answer, isn't it, seriously? But I'll leave Tony to unhandle that.
I can tell you where we are with long COVID, but in terms of long COVID, in the last sort of month, so for January, we had 39 cases of long COVID as an example. Clearly, the fact that we aren't testing is a very good point. And so there will be people, no doubt, that are coming to work who think they've got a cold, that will have COVID. And unfortunately, there is no other way we can, we can measure that other than those that have tested. But there are still obviously the impact, as you quite rightly say, of COVID and the impact on individuals within the organisation with the long COVID.
Thanks for that, Tony. Okay, yeah.
Thank you, chairman. It seems I came back at the right time or the wrong time, depending which way you look at it. Just a couple of comments, if I may. If you look at sickness absence, clearly it's coming down, but not as quickly as we would want. And just to really back up the comments that have been made by councillor Dylks and councillor Strangle about COVID, clearly there is a lag there as far as COVID and particularly long COVID is concerned. But also this year, there's been a lot of respiratory, respiratory tract and flu stuff as well as COVID. And I think a lot of people don't realise, I mean, I was personally, councillor Strangle had COVID unfortunately, I was ill over Christmas for about a month with respiratory trouble, but it wasn't COVID and I did all the tests, it wasn't COVID. And the key point is that people during the main COVID period, during lockdowns and such like, people weren't going out and therefore they weren't able to build up immunity to many common colds, chest infections and such like. So whilst COVID is important, there's also a lot of other respiratory issues out there as well. Councillor Carrington made the point I was going to make on apprentices, so I won't. But I'm really pleased that the council's doing well on intervention in terms of mental health issues. And more people talk about mental health issues nowadays than they ever used to. And the key point is that mental health is now recognised as being as serious as physical illness. And it's very good that the council's taking a lead on that. As far as employment's concerned, progress has been made, just to back up what Tony said, on the legal side of things. We are sort of, seem to be recruiting a little more success in terms of recruiting lawyers at the moment and the grow the own staff type of situation seems to be working quite well, taking lawyers in, training them and such like. So I don't think anybody perhaps disagree with what I'm going to say, they might disagree with the next bit as far as equality, diverse and inclusion is concerned, because I, like many colleagues in my political party, have particular views on issues like this. And whilst I fully support the policy as laid out down there, I would, my own opinion is, we take into account all of those things, yes, we do. But I've always been a believer that the best person gets the job, whatever their skin colour, whatever their sex and whatever their sexuality. We do need to take into account all of the characteristics in law. I have no issue with that at all. But to my way going on, the best thing is to take, is to look at the best person for the job. And I would hate this council or any other organisation to get into the same position that the Royal Air Force were in, who were appointing people in order to meet quotas rather than training pilots who were perfectly good for the job, but they happened to be male. So whilst, while I do fully support the policy and its implementation, I do hold to the view that the best person for the job should in fact get the job. And to congratulate the HR department who have been nominated for awards for their outstanding excellence and service. I don't know if I'm supposed to say that, but I'm getting fully looked upon some officers, but, so congratulations to the HR department. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you for that. In relation to your last comments, I don't think that people like Martin Hill and the chief executive, myself as leader of one of the Labour Group, would disagree at all with the best person for the job, and I'm sure we're doing that. And yes, we have to take into account key, important factors, and I'm sure we're doing that at the moment. Okay, I've got three questions, very briefly. On page 75, it talks about our employment and it talks about adult care and community wellbeing, down by 21 employment contracts. It's a particular big area, adult social care is. And I just wonder if there's anything that can be said specifically about that reduction in employment contracts? Was that people leaving for other work? Do we have any analysis on? Is there anything you can say about that? Because it's worrying, given the fact that adult social care is an important service that we deliver either directly or indirectly.
Tony may want to come in. I mean, certainly I have spoken to Glenn around areas of pressure in terms of hard to recruit area. I think one of the things that we're experiencing in terms of adult social care, which is not helpful, is the transfer of staff or the movement of staff from the council into the health service because of the, because of the pay rate being better. And certainly, if you look at the sort of hard to recruit areas in terms of, you know, social work, there's been quite a lot of investment in terms of mental health services, national investment, which obviously has trickled down locally, which is absolutely really good because that means then we can provide more local services. But what that has also meant is that we've seen staff move from LCC employment over to deliver mental health support through the Mental Health Trust. There's a number of examples of that. We are working with our health colleagues in terms of how we can have much more of a system approach to workforce recruitment. But clearly, at the end of the day, we all want the best staff. And so however much you want to frame it being a system, obviously people want to recruit and fill the vacancies that they've got. So it's work in progress. We know what the issue is, we know what the challenges are, but that, I think, accounts for quite a significant number. Tony may have a bit more of the detail than me.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Chair. In terms of adult care, I mean, their overall turnover has actually declined in the last, it won't be in this report, but it has declined, this is information I received yesterday, since December, reduced by half a percent. So looking at the figures, they don't look, in terms of voluntary turnover, it doesn't look like there are, there's a significant problem per se within the workforce where there's a high, a high, a high turnover rate. However, the point that Debbie makes is a good one. We do know that there have been opportunities elsewhere. We fought for some of our staff that are perhaps higher paid. But one thing that would be interesting to look at, I think, from an adult care perspective is, is also an age, is the age profile of that workforce, because there could be that there is issues, issues around retirement, that sort of thing, that could be a contributory factor, which wouldn't ordinarily be picked up into the turnover, the voluntary turnover figure. So that is something, again, I can, I can, I can look into.
And the second question relates to page 78, and it talks that following recent contact from the Equality and Human Rights Commission, we have been ensuring that the information that the council publishes and the actions we commit to meet the public sector equality duty. Does that suggest that they had a look and didn't think that we would perform in that duty as well as we could do?
Thank you for that, chairman. Essentially, the Equality and Human Rights Commission do an audit every year of public authorities. The information was on the website. Regrettably, they couldn't find the information as easily as perhaps we should have been able for them to see it. So that, so we've made that clear to them where it is and we've highlighted that to them. So from a workforce perspective, they are assured around our public sector equality duty.
And then finally, it refers on page 78 to the corporate leadership team has now received a summary of the stocktake, which involved 700 employees and was led by around 70 individuals. The CLT reflecting on the results and deciding what the priorities will be, and the staff briefings are going to be in March. I take it that at some point, the findings of that diagnostic stocktake will come to us?
Yeah, we can share the highlights of that, yeah.
Okay, fine, thank you. Okay, does anybody else want to ask a question? Right. No? Right. So we've got a report from Tony Cavanagh, Assistant Director HR, which provides an update on the performance of the people management service for quarter three. Do we accept that report with comments noted? Those in favour? Those against? Those abstaining? No, thank you for, thank you for the report, Tony. Thanks. Okay. So Revenue Budget Monitoring Report, 22, 23, quarter three. Michelle.
Thank you very much, chairman. So this report summarises our revenue forecast against the budget for the current year up to the position at the end of December. The appendices that start with the table on page 93 give more detail of the variances reported and also provide updates on the use of the council's reserves and development fund initiatives. Our current forecast variance excluding schools is an underspend of 1.62 million, which is a very similar position to what we reported in quarter two, even though there've been a number of changes over the various lines. Many of the emerging pressures that were reported in quarter two related to the main inflation pressures that have impacted during the year, so those impacts on the energy budgets and our contracts relating to general inflation and national living wage impacts. So the main change in the pressures for quarter three is around the transport budget within the place directorate, and this relates to the education travel budget, which is forecasting a pressure and an overspend of 4 million, which is being offset in part by an underspend on the passenger transport line of 1.2 million. Some of the less material forecasts have been reduced over children's services and the resources directorate to bring the overall position back to an underspend that's been The appendices include planned use of EMR reserves, which haven't altered, and I think that's all I was going to say really by way of introduction, so hand over for any questions.
Anything you want to add, Andrew?
No, thank you, Chair. Obviously, clearly, the budget that council set last Friday is making account for some of the pressures that we're referring to in the paper, so that's the only, that's the only, the main point really, is to feed through the links.
Okay, so we've got a summary, basically, saying revenue position, we're forecasting an underspend of 1.66 million. Does anybody want to make any comments that we can pass on to the executive shortly? Councillor Brock? Jackie.
Could I just, sorry, could I just ask a quick question, please? Thank you for a very clear report. Again, these reports are brilliantly done. Could I just ask, with regard to the underspend in children's and in adults, two areas with very high cost pressures, they're explained as being an inability to actually recruit health visitors in one and domiciliary care in the other. So does that money remain in place for the potential to employ those people if they arrive for the duration of the budget or is it used elsewhere? Thank you.
Basically, the Adults Fund has been recycled back into what's called the hardship fund for the care homes that have contracts with us to apply if they need certain help within their structures from the current financial issues and inflation issues. So what was, it's about 1.7 million and that's been rolled over for this next year's hardship fund.
Could I come back, Chair?
Yes, of course.
Thank you very much. So what happens then if health visitors and domiciliary care suddenly appear and we can employ them? Thanks.
Thank you. So there's two issues. So the domiciliary care, we don't employ ourselves, the health visitors, we do employ ourselves. And so as councillor Marfleet has said, for the domiciliary care, we don't employ ourselves, so it's utilised to fund the providers. With regard to health visiting, the budget does stay there. Now, clearly, there will be occasions where if they can't recruit a health visitor, they may want to increase the amount of support workers, which is clearly not ideal, but it's better to have somebody to visit the family than nobody to visit the family. it's better to have somebody to visit the family than nobody to visit the family. So they have got a flexible approach. But because it's a public health grant that funds it, it then would go into any underspend and obviously back into the public health reserve if at the end of the year it's not used. We don't corporately top slice it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, could I pick up on the question of which is on, well, not the question, but the point that's made on page 87, which is the changing nature of the economic context and financial mitigation, which is at the top of page 87. We are doing all we can, actually, to mitigate expected higher levels of inflation, not higher than now, but higher than normal. And the paragraphs 1.3, 1.4 and 1.5 are essentially about that. And it's about the level of confidence that we've got. And I've just wondered if you could say, Michelle, as a reassurance to us so that we can reassure the executive that things may not be good, but they're not as bad as they could be.
Yeah, I can pick that up, certainly. So when we set the budget for the current year back in February 22, we were aware of the raising pressure around inflation. So at that point, we increased our contingency to 6.5 million. And that is why we're in this position that we're in at the moment with a forecast underspend, which isn't a picture that's being seen by all local authorities across the country. So we planned in the current year for the pressures that have been mentioned. I think also going forward, we've kept that contingency at the level and we've done quite a lot of detailed work for the budget that was set by council last week to ensure that the service budgets are reflecting the current inflation that they're experiencing, hence the late kind of input around the education travel budget. And a number of the contract budgets, construction budgets have all been inflated as part of that budget that was set for the new year. So we made provision at the beginning in February 22 with this coming over the hill, if you like, made provision in the budget at that point. And we've been monitoring it through the year, hence the position we're in at the moment. And we've continued to make that provision in the budget that was set for 23/4.
It's been equal. And that means recognizing that we can't forecast the future, that we feel pretty comfortable about what we've done unless something out of the left field comes in. Is that a fair assessment?
I think it is a fair assessment. I think crystal ball is something that I think we'd all love. But in terms of mitigating, we've still got those strong reserves. We've kept that position and that's to help us go forward. The government have put in funding for 3.4 to help in the inflation position and they've kind of indicated that will carry on for the short term. But we've maintained those reserves to make sure we've got a sustainable position going on beyond that. I'm confident that we have done that, yes.
Okay, yeah. So you don't want to speak, Debbie? No?
No, I think councillor Marfleet wanted to.
Sure, sorry, I got that, but I hand signals next. Hugo.
It's just actually a point of order or point of correction in relation to my comment. Actually, it hasn't gone to the executive yet, which is due on March 7. So technically, actually, the hardship fund is not quite passed through the system. So I'll just, we'll wait till March 7 before confirmation. Thank you.
Hugo for rescuing yourself, as it were. Okay, fine. Who's next? Yeah, councillor Dokes, Phil.
Thank you. I just wondered if we could hear a bit more about, obviously, the homeschool, the pressure on homeschool transport and the overspend of 4 million, I think you said. Obviously, a big, and a big challenge. I just wondered if we could hear a little bit more about what are we doing about it? And, you know, how can it be resolved? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Head turning here. Who's going to answer that?
No, thank you very much for that question. Yeah, so essentially, there is quite significant work going on in that area, as you appreciate in the paper. It just explains some of those challenges that we're facing. But the transformation programme is fundamental to that. So we have got some working with partners to try and transform the way we go about procuring route optimizations, the new system that we've implemented so we can be more efficient in not only how we procure, but actually how we actually deliver the transport and the maximization of the routes. And there are other things, such as passenger assistance and things like that, where we're exploring to be a bit more effective in the way we go about things. So there's a number of work streams on that, keeping a watching brief on that in terms of how those are impacting, particularly on a cost base. But clearly, the costs are escalating, they are worrying. And obviously, that cost pressure was reflected in next year's budget. But there is a stretching plan to deliver more of a sustainable budget going forward, noting there is challenges facing that area.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Michelle. On page 85, the summary is set out with under five or six bullet points. And what we're recommending is that the executive notes the current position on the revenue budget and decides on any corrective action necessary. So we've made some comments which have been captured and I'll be reporting those to the executive to reflect what we've said. Given that sort of generality, are we happy that the executive gets a resume of what we've just been discussing today? If you agree with that, can you please indicate? Anybody disagree? No? Okay, then the motion is carried. Thank you. Right. We move on to the capital budget monitoring report. Again, Michelle.
Thank you very much. So the second report is the capital monitoring report. And the current forecast position on our capital programme for the current year is an underspend of 11.5 million. The majority of this variance is the capital corporate contingency, which we hold within this budget to deal with unexpected spend and costs and the level of which we've reviewed through the budget setting process and we will review again at year end. That is the main variance. I think there's a number of small variances through the programme with the notable one, probably the overspend on highways maintenance of 1.2 million. And that's usually to do with, and it will be to do with, the programming of work to allow for poor weather. So the pressures that we've been identifying on our larger projects have all been identified and incorporated into the budget that was approved by council last week. So our major schemes, such as Grantham Southern Relief Road and the North Hican Relief Road and the SENS Schools Programme, have all had their budgets updated to reflect growing cost pressures. And that was approved by council last week. So nothing more to add from me on the report. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Comments, questions? Capital budget, big part of our spending programme. Anybody want to raise anything in particular to pass on to the executive? Thank you, Jackie.
Just a question, really, to help me understand something, please. In the summary at the very beginning, it talks about dividing into blocks and the projects, which I think that's very helpful. But then it talks about the blocks, which are annual recurrent allocations of funding, usually for maintenance, et cetera. So why is maintenance in the capital budget as opposed to the revenue? I didn't quite get that. Thank you.
So it'd be things like property maintenance, that's maybe more than large schemes of work. And highway maintenance, of course, is a capitalized cost. So some maintenance is considered to be capital if you're improving the life of the asset. So a bit of a technical term, I'm afraid, but it's effectively if you're improving the life of the asset to over a year, then we can capitalize those costs and some maintenance costs do fall into that. As I say, the biggest area will be highways, but also some property being included in that as well.
Thank you very much. You mentioned we can capitalize that cost. So that's a process that you can undertake, that's sort of an advantage to us. Could you explain just a bit more, please?
Yeah, so if we're not allowed to borrow money effectively to run the day to day running of the council services, it's not allowable. But what we can do is borrow money to improve our assets that we own. So we can borrow to fund our capital programme and things like property maintenance fall into that. So it spreads the cost effectively, it makes it more affordable. We do have a policy about what we capitalize. There's obviously the codes, the prudential code that we're allowed to follow as well in terms of what we're allowed to capitalize. But it does allow us to spread the cost of some of those things over a number of years, rather than just paying for them in year as they occur.
Thank you. Michelle, it mentions the, and you've already alluded to it, the SIF code. And I know it's set down by government, but is it slightly a sort of frustration for officers from a personal and professional view that you are told now with the debt liability benchmark, when you can borrow, when you can't borrow? Whereas before it was very much, oh, we, interest rates are low, we'll borrow on this instance, not now. But now it's very much frowned upon, oh, but you've got cash floating about, use your cash.
I think, I'm not going to steal Karen's thunder because she'll probably recover all of this in the Treasury Management Strategy. So if I can defer to Karen picking that up when she does her report, if that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, next item. Okay. Degree of confidence risk, you know, in terms of the outturn of the budget for going forward, rather than not just the quarter three report. To what extent do we have a degree of confidence in this year's programme as it comes to an end and next year's programme? Given the issues we've talked about in relation to inflation cost pressures?
I think that the confidence is good. I think there were some challenges after Covid about supply chain issues. That was literally about getting stuff delivered. So and I think some of those problems have been, you know, overcome now. So and I also think we've done quite a lot of work to reflect, especially around our major schemes, about the impact of contract inflation, construction inflation, and recognize that by updating the programme, particularly for next year, to make sure all of that is reflected. We've not added new, you know, much new stuff, other than the blocks that we know we need to do on an annual basis. There's not been a lot of new stuff added into the programme around specific projects. We've obviously added money in to support things like highways maintenance. So I think the degree of confidence is good.
Anything else anybody wants to raise in relation to capital budget monitoring report for quarter three? Okay, well, this is a summary on page 125. And that we're, the recommendation is that the executive notes the position on the capital programme and decides on any corrective action necessary. And we will be putting forward the comments that have been made. Unless people disagree with the comments that have been made or want to add any more, can we have a vote on passing on our views about the current state of the quarter three report to the executive? Those in favour? Those against? Anyone abstaining? Okay, it's carried. Thank you very much indeed. Okay, so we move on now to the item that was half discussed in part, Treasury Management Performance, 22, 23. Quarter three, okay. Karen.
Thank you, Chairman. As time is brief, I'll just highlight the main points from the quarter three update report, which covers activities in Treasury Management to 31st of December. Starting with interest rates and the economy, the graph on page 151 of Appendix A shows the path of short term and long term rates in 22, 23 over the year and shows the step increases in rates that have happened. Base rate reached 3.5% at the end of December, but it's actually increased to 4% in February. The markets forecast base rate to peak at four and a half percent currently by the middle of 2023. Long term rates have also increased following this increase in base and have rested between 4.2 and 4.6% by the end of December. Currently, they're about 4.4 to 4.9%. This increase in rates is far higher than envisaged in last year's strategy and is a result of the measures to tackle the extreme rates of inflation that worldwide economies, including the UK, have experienced over the year. Inflation peaked in October at 11.1%. It's come down slightly to 10.1% now, but obviously it's still a high rate. Both short term and long term rates are expected to fall in 2023, again, as inflation is expected to fall. The Link Asset Services, our Treasury Management Advisors' latest interest rate forecast is shown at the bottom of Appendix A at 151. But rates, base rate, for example, is expected to fall back to two and a half percent over two, two year period. So the timing and extent of this fall, obviously, though, all hinges on inflation at the moment and what happens to that. So time will tell. Turning to investments, the key position shown in Appendix B on page 157, the graph on the top left of this appendix shows that investment balances are reducing. There were 254 million at the end of December, 249 million as of today. Investment return has increased over the period in line with the base rate increases. So the annual investment return to the 31st of December was just under 1.8%. The rate at the 31st of December was 3.59%. The return now is 3.99% as of today. So you could see that we're still in an increasing environment for interest rates. The annualized return is still under the SONIA benchmark due to the time lag of rates in the investment portfolio against the rapid increases in the base rate. And this has been previously discussed. However, I'm pleased to say that the rate at the 31st of December far exceeds the benchmarking comparators from the Link Benchmarking Group and is above the rate risk rated return band. So although we're under our benchmark, we're still outperforming comparators. The weighted average maturity of the fund remains steady at 114 days. And finally, moving on to borrowing, the key position on borrowing is shown in Appendix F on page 177. It shows that the borrowing requirement for 22, 23, including the carry forth from previous year, is 164.5 million. However, no external borrowing has been undertaken in the year and that is in line with the debt liability benchmark indicator. That's shown on Appendix E of page 175. This no borrowing strategy will mean that internal borrowing will increase and external borrowing is set to be 467.8 million by the year end. And that's at a cost of 3.725%. Just to answer councillor Smith's question of previous year on debt liability, that is no borrowing is what the debt liability benchmark is telling us for this year and for next year. But I'll mention that in the next item. But and that's because, you know, we're focusing on what level of our cash resource we want and the cash resource that we've got available, if we set that for 100 million at liquidity, for liquidity, that that is the result of telling us that the result is we don't have to borrow to fund that. However, I mean, this is just one tool. It's a prudential indicator, but it is a tool to focus on. But we have to manage that result. And if the inputs that create that benchmark change or interest rate environment changes, then we'll make another review of that at the time and that may lead to a different position. So it's only an indicator to follow and to manage, basically. So that's the answer. So that's all I wanted to say. So I'll just take any questions. Thank you.
We've got two other people, Chris Scott, Director of Link Asset, and our very own Sue. So is there anything you want to add?
No, nothing to add from me. Thank you, councillor.
Okay, Chris is online, is that right?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, Chris, anything you want to share with us?
Not on the quarter three report, no, I'll make some comments on the strategy shortly.
Okay. Anything, any members of OSMB want to raise in relation to Treasury Management Strategy?
Councillor Strangel?
Yep, Councillor Strangle, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you Karen for your report, not going to mention interest rates, you're doing that for everyone.
Microphone.
Oh, no, just switch it off, thank you, as I was saying to Karen, I won't mention interest rates, because we've been doing that for a few years, but I think we're fairly accurate on that. But accuracy is what I'm talking about here, and on page 152, on the bullet point that starts GDP, unless I'm mistaken, the first sentence is incorrect, it says, which probably marked the start of the UK recession. My understanding is we never went into recession, we were close to it, but we never went into it, but it does say that we've marked the start of it, so I'd just like clarification on that, thank you.
Yes, thank you councillor. Yeah, unfortunately, you've highlighted the fact that time moves on from when these reports are written, and that this report is actually a report by Link as at a certain point in time, ending December, commenting on the 31st of December 22, where we were in danger of recession then, and then things have moved on, and I know we've had more data since then, so you'll have to allow for events moving on, because base rate has increased as well since these reports were written, and inflation, you know, data has come out, and GDP and stuff, so that's the reason why.
Thank you. Jackie?
Thank you, I wonder, Karen, if I could just get you to clarify something. I was going to ask a question on page 48, on one of the strategy boxes, but you mentioned a borrowing of 160, 161 million, but could you just clarify what that was before I ask my question, please?
Yes, certainly, that's the borrowing requirement derived from the capital programme plans, so that's, that's the amount that was highlighted from those plans to be met from borrowing.
Okay, then, so on page 148, in the strategy box, and can I just say, I found these strategy boxes extremely helpful, the graying and the, it really did focus the attention and the understanding, so do please keep those going from my perspective, anyway. It talked about the long term, the long term external borrowing, but on the second line, it talked about the new borrowing requirement for 2223 to finance capital programme, set at 114 million, so is, I don't get, can't marry the two?
Yes, sure, the difference is the carry forward of borrowing requirement from the previous year, that everything due to underspends and so forth from the previous year, certain borrowing requirement is carried forward, and I think that's actually itemised in the Appendix, Appendix for Borrowing, that are split, but the difference is the carry forward.
Okay, anymore? Anybody else want to raise, anything else on item 12, Treasury Management Performance Quarter Three? Okay, what we're asked to do, actions required, overview and scrutiny management board are invited to review the report and seek assurance on the Treasury Management's activities and performances. If we agree that we have reviewed the report and sought assurances, can you vote in favour, please? Those who don't think we have? Okay, any abstentions? No, that's item 12, item 12 carried. If we move on to the Treasury Management Strategy Statement and Annual Investment Strategy for the coming year, 22, 23, 24, this is for pre-decision scrutiny priority decision by the Leader of the Council between the 13th and 17th of March. But the report, again from Karen, and we also have, as I mentioned earlier, Chris Scott, Director of Asset Services in attendance, and yes, Sue Maycock's here as well, so, over to you Karen, with support from Sue and Chris, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The Treasury Management Strategy Statement and Annual Investment Strategy for 2324 sets the framework for the management of cash flows, borrowing, investments and risk for the year ahead, and this is to be considered by the Executive Council of Resources, Communication and Commissioning in March. Again, because time is short, I will just pick out the key changes in the strategy from the key point summary on page 180 and 181 of your packs. As the Chairman said, Chris Scott is here as our Treasury Management Advisor to give a view on our strategy at the end. So the revised SITF code of Treasury Management Code of Practice and Prudential Code was issued in December 2021, and this is now fully effective from the financial year 2324, and so this strategy now complies fully with those new requirements in the codes, so I'll just pick out what those new requirements are. The, the main ones are the new policies and procedures covering non-Treasury investments, and those are, those policies and procedures are mainly dealt with in the capital strategy. The requirement, there's a new requirement for a new skills and knowledge framework for those involved in Treasury Management, officers and members, and this will be developed in 2324, and this will cover identifying competences for appropriate roles, self-assessment against those competences for people, any gaps highlighted in training and skills to be covered by tailored learning plans, and then, of course, monitoring of the whole scheme. So that's, that's what that involves, and will be developed during the year. Again, another, a new, new change is a debt liability benchmark, and again, that is on Annex D, page 217 of your pack. We introduced this previously last year, but it has now become formally effective under the new code, and we've just discussed that slightly already, but that is to determine what level of borrowing is required to keep our investments, cash resource at a level of around 100 million for liquidity needs. The appendix shows, again, I've mentioned that it's likely that there'll be no external borrowing again in 2324, and this is due to having the cash resource to cover this. When interest rates are forecast to fall over the year, this no borrowing strategy is in alignment with this, so, but again, we will review this, we will revise, the benchmark is, it will be revised for actuals, and any changes to the capital programme throughout the year, and the strategy may be revised if inflation, if interest rates, sorry, if the interest rate outlook changes from this falling prediction. The result of the no borrowing will or should be that investment levels come down to around 100 million by the end of next financial year, but this will be monitored. Both short term and long term interest rates are set to peak in 2023, then set to fall, and the annexes show that in the pack. This, again, all depends on inflation, and how quickly that, that is likely to fall. Or food and energy and commodity prices are all set to fall this year, so inflation should fall out because of that, but again, crystal ball and all that, you know, we don't know what's going to happen to that, but that, that is the forecast for the markets. Any wrong move in timing of base rate changes by the MPC could be to the detriment of growth during the forthcoming year, so the MPC has got a fine balancing act this year. Another change in the strategy is to, regarding minimum revenue provision, this policy is covered in Annex C of page 215 of your pack. This determines the amount of borrowing to set aside from cash resources to repay borrowing, and MRP is a prudential indicator also. The policy has been revised just to allow us the flexibility of changing the calculation of MRP to an annuity method if it's appropriate to do so based on asset life. To overcome the time lag issue of the SONIA investment benchmark that I alluded to in the previous item, the, it's been decided to adjust the benchmark for 2324 by the margin between the SONIA rate and the council's average money market fund rate return. The reason for this is that we use money market funds instead of overnight investments for liquidity, to manage our liquidity, and being pooled funds, they also suffer from the time lag issue of a rising interest rate environment. So by taking the difference between that return and off SONIA, it's thought that it should make the SONIA benchmark a more appropriate benchmark to compare to, but obviously, this will be reviewed during the year, again, to see how that, how that falls. Just, not changes, but just to highlight the key points of the strategy, the prudential, the council's prudential indicators for 2324 are shown in Appendix B of page 213. These are limits, ensure the council's capital plans are affordable, prudent and sustainable. The council's investment strategy is shown in Annex E, page 218, and this outlines the council's investment policy for its Treasury Investments. The council's risk appetite for Treasury Investments still remains low, and the priorities remain security, liquidity and yield in that order. And finally, the council's borrowing and investment strategies for 2324 are outlined in the report on powers 2.36 on page 202 and 2.46 of page 206, and these reflect all the factors and the environment that we're in as well. So that's all I want to say, and happy to take any questions, thanks.
Nothing from me, thank you Chair.
Sue or Chris?
Sorry, now I have nothing to add, thank you Chair.
Chris, do you want to give a background to all of this?
Yep, certainly, so just a few things to concentrate on, I mean, Karen's alluded to a number of changes that are due to be made during, for 2324 onwards, things like the liability benchmark, knowledge and skills, policy and procedures around non-Treasury investments, and also quarterly reporting, which, you know, you've already been doing it at Lincolnshire, so not too much to change there, but I just really wanted to reaffirm that, you know, all these changes are being made, they're in line with the relevant guidance, and that, you know, the council's fully compliant in all these, all these areas, just really important to put that over. Then in terms of the strategy and what's been illustrated, as far as the borrowing strategy, obviously everybody's aware that we're, you know, in a period of elevated short and long term interest rates compared to what we've been used to, and that's likely to continue, you know, certainly for the remainder of this calendar year and into next, into next year, and any reductions in interest rates will be, as explained, very much dependent on the performance of inflation, and some demonstrable evidence that that's going to come down during this year and into, into next year, so to give that some perspective, best estimates at the moment is that CPI inflation will be around about four and a half percent at the end of this calendar year, and then it'll be hopefully back to the sort of 2% ish range by the end of 2024, so we've still got, you know, best part of two years before we get back to where we are. So any, any prospect of rate reductions in the future will be very much dependent on, you know, real evidence, firm evidence that inflation is under control and coming down, and I think it's fair to point out that, you know, if inflation remains more sticky, more stubborn, doesn't come down as quickly, then we, the risk to any forecast is that interest rates will stay elevated for a little bit longer before they come down, so that's the, the risk there. I mean, in terms of the, a local level, the council's strategy of not borrowing is appropriate, based on a level of cash balances available, but also on the fact that, you know, interest rates are unattractive and you wouldn't want to avail to them at the moment, so we're not advising any clients to, to borrow at the moment, and of course, that ties in and is consistent with what the liability benchmark is saying. So there will be better opportunities after this financial year and into the next financial year whereby, you know, it will be better to look at, you know, borrowing at that point, point in time. We will, of course, keep everything under review, whether it's the liability benchmark and the inputs, as well as in interest rate advice and borrowing advice, so quite happy with, with what's proposed there, and, you know, seems a relatively risk-free strategy as well. On the flip side, in terms of investments, I mean, encouragingly, you know, it's made Karen's job much more interesting now, insofar as obviously you can get a return on your investments, and obviously that's a good contributor to the, to the budget, so, you know, if we see elevated levels of interest rates during this year and into next year, then there'll be some good, good returns on the cash that you have. As illustrated, you know, if there is no borrowing taking place, then that level of investments is going to, going to fall, but again, there'll still be sufficient cash to generate some decent investment returns, and obviously in the previous report, you saw that Lincolnshire's, you know, fares very favourably in terms of the rate return that it's generating compared to a local benchmarking group, and indeed other county councils as well. There haven't been any changes to your counterparty policy in terms of criteria for an assessment for entities that you're going to use for investment, but again, in light of market conditions and credit conditions, we feel that what you've got is appropriate, and we would enable you to manage those funds effectively and generate, generate a decent return. So overall, we're more than happy what, what's in the strategy, what's been proposed, and it's fit for purpose for the 2324, but of course, we'll keep it under review during the year. That was it from me, thank you.
Thank, I mean, thank you, that's good, okay, yeah, Martin?
In the light of these quite horrific reports elsewhere of councils, well disgracefully really, and I think, you know, we know where, you know, there's quite, there's a handful now who have got ridiculous amounts of debts due to very unwise investments, I mean, we have a policy here that, political policy, that we do, we do not do the so-called investments, the money we invest is for the benefit of residents, but probably useful if the committee could be reassured that we wouldn't get into a position like some of these other councils, and what checks and balances are in place, because I think it is a live issue, so I don't know whether Andrew or somebody just wants to explain what the checks and balances are, so if I decided to go mad and invest in something inappropriate, what would be the checks and balances in place? I'm not, I won't be going mad, I hope, but you never know.
That's an interesting question, isn't it? How would you stop Martin Hill going mad? Yeah, right, go on.
Not at all, well, no, any, anything like the leader's just referred to would, would give rise to changes in policy. Policy gives rise to the scrutiny process, executive decision-making process, where, you know, we've seen naturally, you know, members of the council have the ability to, to, to debate, much as we do, are doing in here today, so, you know, they're the main checks and balances. Clearly, I think it's thankfully to say, the leader and I are very much on the same page in terms of the, the investments and what other councils have been doing. I've said before numerous times in this committee that, you know, Treasury Management, for me, and the way I've been brought up as a, as a local government accountant, is something to always do, the, you know, I would say it, sorry Karen, the boring stuff well, but, you know, and, and, and that is said in the best possible sense, really, because, you know, as the leader said, you're here to, to provide services, and good services for the benefit of residents, and going off spending money doing, frankly, as the leader said, some disgraceful stuff is not in the remit of the, and that's not me being political, I'm, I'm levering a view of, of how other councils have operated from an officer perspective as well, I just don't think it's right, so, so yes, I think I've answered the question that was posed to, posed to me. So, yeah, I think I've answered the question that was posed to me.
Can I just add to that, if I may? What one of the, or the new things for the CIPR code is to introduce some more prudential indicators to cover the non-Treasury investments as well, which is also another way of monitoring, you know, limiting what councils can do, and that includes having a limit on the net income from commercial investments and also maximum limit for the amount of reserves we've got for potential losses as well. So that's two ways that the code has brought in to control that undertaking as well.
Before you come in, I think we ought to remind ourselves about the recommendation, because this committee is going to have its views captured and reported back to the leader of the council, which does seem a very circular sort of discussion that we're having at the moment. Okay.
Yeah. I was just going to add an extra point as well about the new limits that the PWOB, the Public Works Loans Board, have put on borrowing to investors well. There's obviously been clamping down, and that's when the leader talks about controls, that's another one of those that's in place. So whereas, you know, in the mid-teens, I guess, in terms of, you know, councils going off to buy various bits and bobs for investments, there is a more fail, checks and balances in place in that sphere as well now, in terms of limiting borrowing ability.
Okay, Jackie.
Thanks Chair, and my question's around similar things actually. I found it quite worrying in the paper that the CIPR code only came in in 2021, you know, that officers and members have got to have the skills and knowledge to do the job. Really, that's kind of shutting the stable door after the host has bolted. To bring that in 2021 is ridiculous, that should have been in forever. You know, that should have been an expectation. Now, this council does provide the training and does provide the support, but unless I'm reading it wrongly, it did seem to be a very late change and introduction into that. So I have a question on that. Given that that has been emphasised since 2021 and is now a formal policy, is there any historic risk with organisations that may not have put those protections in place and who have been involved with us prior to 2021? So that's the first question. And the second thing is just about my understanding, sorry.
Do you want to pause there and?
Oh yeah, sure, yeah.
We'll deal with that.
I'll take the first bit Chair, and I might hand over to Karen McBeal to provide the capital and the treasury specifics. Obviously, there's a duty on me as the Council Section 151 officer to ensure the, I'll quote it verbatim, the properness of the council's financial administration and affairs, and that's set out in the law from 1972, whatever. So, you know, that has been there for a long time. And I think what this is now doing is narrowing it down into specifics where the strengthening required to account for some of those challenges that the sector's seen over the last 10 years. But, you know, ensuring appropriate financial training, I'd see as a key part of the role of myself and the finance team, ensuring that members have got the appropriate skills to do the role that's, you know, enshrined on them anyway. Clearly, we can always do better on that front and make it as relevant and as up to date as we can, and clearly always happy to take views of members on that front to ensure that you've all got the skills that you need to be able to discharge your abilities effectively. But I don't know if Karen wants to add anything specifically on this front.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'd just say that the area of training has always been within the treasury strategy, and prior to this change for now, it's always, Andrew's quite rightly said, he's responsible for making sure that the officers and members are trained accordingly, and so it's always been in there. And of course, members have received annual training in treasury because of that. This is just really formalising, formalising that training and skills really, as I see it, and getting it into a formal undertaking.
Thank you. May I, thank you. Yeah, oh no, I'm fully confident that this council does actually follow due process and does give the required training. What worries me is that they have had to highlight it at a stage when so many other councils have made these disastrous decisions, you know, should we pop out and buy a shopping mall tomorrow, you know? And it's extremely worrying. It does seem late for them to be doing this. Right, the other question I had, it was just a question of risk on Page 221. When you were talking about the sovereign ratings, it's mentioned earlier in the report, and then you give a very clear explanation about long-term rating, because I think we accept A for that, don't we, and A or AA minus for sovereign rating. But what you, there's a sentence there I didn't quite get, it talks about credit rating agencies who remove the effect of sovereign support from entities, from an entity's individual rating. This now makes it more important to focus solely on the ratings of an entity itself within an investment strategy. Is that, does that introduce any greater risk for us without that sovereign support being there? Thank you.
Who's going to pick that up?
I will, thanks. I don't believe so. I think the risk is lowered really because you're concentrating on the entity itself and the ratings it gives to that entity, so, and, you know, that they have to stack up. So I don't believe so, no.
Jackie, anybody else want to ask anything? Yep, Ian.
Thanks Chair, and I just wanted to pick up on this issue of risk, because we're talking very much about errors made by other councils. Those are very important to bear in mind. At this place, and the leader has summed it up right, we invest for our residents, and I'm involved in the district council where I'm Dierl Hattard, in taking those decisions at executive board level for investment as well. And I think that local government has a crucial role to play in the investment it makes. Yes, it can go wrong, and in some cases had, it does not here, particularly in terms of economic development. We can facilitate the private sector, often working where the market cannot do that, to encourage economic development, to encourage prosperity, to encourage employment. So we should never, as local government entities, be shy about investing. It is absolutely right that we work within proper bounds, and we certainly have, and a proper strategy, which we have at this council and in some other places. But we should never be shy of that investment, because the positive role which local government can play in encouraging, particularly on the economic front, prosperity for our residents should never be underestimated. Thank you Chair.
Very good point, actually. Risk is important, it has to be taken into account. We have to recognise that many good schemes always have an element of risk about them. You can look back 20 or 30 years to the university and the risk of investing in the university. But there's been plenty of other schemes in recent years where, yes, there's always an element of risk. Thank you. Yep.
If I can just, sorry, if I can just add to that. So Karen's paper today is talking about our treasury strategy, and this is about how we manage our cash balances. She's referred to non-Treasury investment, and we've covered that in our capital strategy. So the budget that was approved by council last week included our capital strategy within it, and it's really clear that we invest for, you know, non-Treasury investment is around service delivery and support to our residents. The definition of the kind of commercial stuff is that it's purely for income generation, and we're quite clear in our capital strategy that that's not where our investments are.
Anything else that anybody wants to raise in relation to Item 13, Treasury Management Strategy Statement? Okay. If not, then what we're being asked to do is to consider the attached report and determine whether the board supports the recommendation to the leader of the council set out in the report, and agree any additional comments, we've had plenty of those which have been captured, I'm sure by Tracy. So, if we agreed that the board, can we have a proposal in a second for the recommendation as set out to go forward? Those in, proposal in a second, yeah, proposal Ian, second. Jackie, lovely, thank you. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? No, that's carried, thank you. We move on to Item 14, which has got two parts to it. Hugo is Chair of Adults and Communities Wellbeing. Over to you Hugo.
Thank you Chair. Basically, most of the previous activity is in with the report. Just to update you on the procurement of the Active Recovery Beds Winter Programme of 2022-23, that has actually been very successful, and the recovery programme has been phenomenal. So hopefully that will be looked to be rolled out and capitalised on, but it's also a great way of how LCC has used its procurement skills to also support the NHS and give relief to the NHS. Another sort of area that is in that report, which personally I'm not, is on the Public Health Report of Derek Ward of 2022, which actually is a very good report in the making. The only thing I disagree with is that fast food leads to obesity. Fast food is about not waiting 30 minutes for cooking time and doesn't necessarily represent anything other than fast. It's not about the quality of food, and so fast food establishments does not mean obesity. It's actually how people go about and what they eat and their daily exercise which leads to obesity. So I don't agree with that aspect in Derek's report. And having been all over London and Naples in Italy and seen the fast food outlets in their absolute glory and not a lot of obesity, it does highlight how actually, if people had actually got off and walked, it would certainly help the situation. Back to, since, because we had our committee meeting yesterday, so I'll update you on that. We had community-supported living and residential care usual costs. This was the first of two pre-decision items being considered by the executive on the 7th of March. By the way, it's my birthday, just to declare an interest in that one as well. And if you want to send anything to me, then you're more than welcome. Please don't go over £25 or else we'll have an interest to declare. But the committee agreed to support the proposed level of fees paid by the council to providers of community-supported living, residential care and residential with nursing care. The committee was reassured by the rationale to calculate these rates. Our comments included that the support such as the council's hardship fund being targeted at those providers in need, support for the use of block contracts, the development of intermediate care initiatives such as the active recovery beds. And the overall rate that was, that has been agreed really is, the detail that they've gone into to work with the providers to ensure a fair reflection with interest rates and inflation and everything else, they really have done a good job, and it really does represent a very fair rise, and I think credit to the team. The next part was substance misuse grant funding, which took a little bit of sort of working through the mechanics, but in effect, what it is, it's from harm to hope, a 10-year drug plan to cut crime and save lives. And that's the government's initiative for 2021 going forward for 10 years. So the substance misuse grant funding as a result is the element of that which is about sort of treatment and basically ensuring everybody's wellbeing. And as a result, four separate government grants, the council has been offered, and additional funding, funds totaling 2.6 million, which is focused on the treatment of substance misuse and recovery during 2023-24. And our second predetermined item, the committee endorsed the plan for the use of this funding. These services would support a wider drug and alcohol strategy which includes an emphasis on prevention. The committee would like to see outcome measures and benchmarking applied to the use of the funding. For example, increased funding from the government during 2022-23 had led to the caseload of each substance misuse support worker, reducing from 70 to 55 clients. We also went through the whole funding, because we're quite aware that in effect the government could change its mind and actually suddenly not hand out the level of funding that has been in effect semi-promised, and it's not altogether confirmed going beyond 2024. But the contract has gone into detail to make sure that the council has covered off and will develop from 2024 on the next proposals of what the government says it will give us or promise it will give us. The final bit was the performance report. The committee was advised in a positive report that 13 of the 17 indicators had met or exceeded their target. The committee also accepted the rationale put forward in the report in relation to the four indicators where performance did not meet the targets. Some of the issues raised by the committee would be explored in further items, such as the carers and the recommissioning of NHS health checks. The change to the work programme on the 5th of April 2023, the item on carers' service will be now considered in autumn and put back, no other changes. And the reason why we put it back is the contract has only just started, and it'd be unfair to look at it too soon when it's only just started. So we've left it for six months to let the contract get more bedded into the system. And that's where we are.
Thank you Hugo. Anybody want to ask anything in relation to what Hugo's just talked about? Could I pick up, sorry, did you want to go?
Yeah, I just wanted to support something Chair, and I thought it was very important that Hugo pointed out about the fast food outlets, because for many years now, there's been an emphasis on low fat in the diet, and particularly with children, that can be damaging. Fat is important in the diet. And I think what, I think I would like to really get behind what he's saying there, it's about moderation, and maybe we need to send that back to the Director of Public Health through you? I just feel we've got to be careful about saying fast food, because you assume that that's McDonald's or something like that, but a lot of it is very good food, and we need the fat elements in the diet in a balanced way. So you've got my support there Hugo.
Thank you for that Jackie.
Can I just come back on that? I think what you said is absolutely spot on. In fact, what you do see when you're in London is the real north-south divide. In terms of London now is really booming with independent bakeries and cake makers, you name it. And actually, we really up here and the north of England is in effect controlled by the global conglomerates, and actually, the smaller sort of enterprises aren't really starting up like they have done in London, which is actually really noticeable and benefits. As for public health, nothing to do with Derek, but actually personally, Public Health England has actually really been on the back burner for obesity for far too long, and actually they can't point the finger at everyone else, they need to look at themselves to actually get a bit more motivated. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else anybody wants to raise?
You mentioned the drug and alcohol side. The only thing I will say, and something I used to be involved in and not anymore, is, yeah, is around what they call tier three and tier four treatment, which is actually inpatient treatment, which is actually what the government originally promised. Now, £2 million sounds a lot of money, but if you're doing tier four and tier three treatment, that's going to get swallowed up pretty quickly. So do you have confidence that what's proposed will work, A? And then on the issue that you've talked about on the fast food side, Public Health England have made a cacophony of, in my lifetime, we were told when I was a small boy, oh, if you have butter, it's harmful for you, so you ended up having margarine, and then years later they said, oh no, no, you need butter because it's got natural goodness, it's got this and this in. So half the time, I'll be honest, I think they chop and change when the political wind suits to a certain extent, and it's just a simple case of common sense. If you eat 20 chocolate bars a day and do no exercise, you're going to have a problem. If you eat one and do plenty of exercise, it's not a problem, it's just basic common sense.
Could I just ask, this meeting, sorry, I'm Hugo. When it came to substance misuse grant, and you mentioned Lincolnshire had got about £2.5 million, very roughly, very roughly, divide that by seven, and you've got between £300,000 and £400,000 for each district area. I'm not talking about the district responsibility, but I'm just saying that Lincoln, for example, or North Castran should expect to get £350,000 roughly spent in their area. What sort of extra services would, could we expect in each of the districts across Lincolnshire as a result of that grant? And did you think about outcomes, what we might expect?
Yeah, thank you. Basically, the funding has actually already been allocated in effect, it's divided into three. Um, it's divided into three sort of categories. So you've got housing, um, and you've got basically, um, I wouldn't say prevention, treatment programmes. Um, prevention's not really in there, uh, that's perhaps comes under. We, we highlighted that actually there wasn't quite as fully functional prevention as it should be. It's aligned to more what the government says, but actually, all the jobs were listed on what we're going to recruit for. So there's, it's all pre, it's basically, we have the funding and it's all fully allocated to employ X number of people, to do X number of tasks in the whole of the treatment, in terms of treatment, housing, et cetera. If I open my laptop, I can give you a lot more information, but I think at this stage, it's not that we're suddenly going to get it and what are we going to do? It's actually all pre-programmed. Do I think it's good? Well, we had a really big debate on it and spun it all back round and started again on, on the whole thing. And actually, we all agreed that, yes, it was a good idea and that we have got the money. And I think that what will happen is it will be a year of learning, and, and then actually, if the government really commits to the programme next year, then we will be able to react and learn from this year, uh, and all the sort of benefits that we've done. But everything looks in place, everything is accounted, uh, the money is, and everything, and the, you know, the jobs are all one-year contracts. So it is as good now as it, it can be for this next year.
Um. Clarify whether or not it was a decision-making process in the sense of, has it still got to go to the executive? Because, um, on, once it's established, then could, could, could we, councillors be circulated with the stuff? Because this is the sort of thing that's really hot on the ground, you know? If, um, people do talk about drugs, they talk about government funding, okay, so here is what I'm going to call a good news story, actually, but perhaps you?
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is, as, as Hugo said, it is, uh, it was a part of the public papers which went to, uh, adults yesterday, so the, it is in the public domain. And just to clarify a few things, I think you've got to remember that this, it was a bid that was put in, so it has, it was, uh, for, for, which we were successful in getting from government. Uh, we are the accountable body, but actually, because obviously having, uh, read the papers, we are, although we are the accountable body, the actual spend will be allocated to the various organisations, and they're all listed out in the papers. And in addition, that's, it's in addition to what Public Health currently already do with their thirty five million pounds that I think, or something like that, Lincolnshire got. So it's not, this is, it's topping up, if you like, what activity which already happened. So, but the papers are there in the public domain already, it will be going to the executive on next month, uh, so it'll be there as well. But if you want to see, you can see, as Hugo says, there is a list, a specific list of all the stuff, uh, uh, what will happen and, and where it will go to, but it will go to other organisations. We won't be delivering this directly. But obviously, as part of our public health responsibilities, we'll be making sure that we do all we can to try and mitigate some of the, you know, the, the worst problems that we all know about with, um, drug, uh, substance misuse, et cetera.
I, I agree with all you've said, Martin. What I was really meaning was can we make sure that all councillors get, um, something through their emails to say something about this? Fine, thank you. Back to you, Hugo.
Just to come back, just basically to confirm that the Substance Misuse Treatment Service has a maximum value of one point six million, just over. The other part is Substance Misuse Recovery Service, which stands at a value of a hundred and seventy four thousand. And then the third part is Housing Related Support Service with a value of five hundred and thirty three thousand. So that, in effect, is the basic makeup of the three tiers of services in this middle part of the government's drug strategy.
Thank you. Anybody else want to raise anything? If not, can we move on to Carl, Carl Macy, um, and your, your report, please? Carl?
Yep, thank you, Chairman. Uh, I take the paper as read, so if I can refer the board to page two hundred and thirty seven of the report pack to update you on the items considered on the fifteenth of February. Item one was United Lincolnshire's Hospitals Trust's Elective Care Recovery. National targets have been set to reduce waiting lists for elective appointments. Firstly, nobody should be waiting over seventy eight weeks for their first appointment by the thirty first of March of this year. And secondly, nobody should be waiting more than sixty five weeks by the thirty first of March of twenty twenty four. The committee welcomed ULHT's actions in support of these targets, and the committee will be updated on ULHT's progress. Item two was the Director of Public Health's Annual Report. The committee welcomed the Director of Public Health's Annual Report, the first report covering all Lincolnshire, and looks forward to progress with the report's six recommendations. Item three was the Non-Emergency Patient Transport. As from the first of July twenty twenty three, the East Midlands Ambulance Service will be providing non-emergency patient transport in Lincolnshire for the first time since twenty twelve. EMAS will be replacing the existing provider, HTG UK, formerly known as Thames Ambulance Service, whose average performance has not met any of the contract service targets since they began the contract in twenty seventeen. The committee agreed to look forwards to a smooth transition from HTG UK to EMAS and an improved service for patients. Our fourth item was the Mental Health Rehabilitation. The committee approved its response to the current NHS consultation on mental health rehabilitation care, which includes plans for the permanent closure of Ashley House, which is a low-level dependency unit in Grantham. Looking to our future activity, there are some changes to the work programme. On the fifteenth of March, feedback on the engagement exercise on the temporary closure of Heart Home Centre may not be ready for substantive item for this meeting. We are adding items as well, although one item is currently listed for each of the June, July and September meetings. I can assure the board that the agenda for each of these meetings will be full, as often space is required for unexpected items from the NHS, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to ask Carl anything about what he's, he's looked at? Yep, Jackie?
It's me again, sorry, I'm going to shut up after this one. Um, yeah, um, I was very interested in the closure of the, the temporary closure of the, um, the male psychiatric centre in Harts, um, because I've had a conversation recently with somebody who pointed out to me that support for men is very inadequate across the country. And I don't know if this is the right place to raise this, but if not, I can be directed to the right place, that, um, in Lincoln, for instance, there's a great amount of support for women's refuges and for women to flee to from domestic abuse, but there's nothing for men. Where can a man go if he has to flee an abusive relationship and take a child with him? Uh, we assume that the child stays with the man, and now, now, this is to do with men's mental health, so, but really, I'm not sure that this is a health committee, it could be adult, but we have the two chairs here, so this is a good place to raise it. But it was a really serious thing, and what is worse, I hadn't thought of it. Where does a man go if he has to flee an abusive relationship and take a child with him? Where in Lincoln or Lincolnshire can he go? So can I just put that out there? And is it possible to search some sort of answer or to point me in the right direction that I can pursue that, please? Thank you. May not be, Carl?
I'll come in on that one, if I can, Chairman.
Just before that, Andrew, you can take that on behalf of the executive, um, but it'd be important, yes, um, for you.
Yeah, I mean, safeguarding sits with adults, and, um, they will be coming back, um, to us, so I'll have a word with you, but, yeah, so I think there's a few things that need to sort of be looked at in safeguarding, and that's one of them. So, um, I will promote that when we have them back, but it's not really an NHS situation, that's down to adults. Thank you.
While you're there, Hugo, you didn't say much about your forward programme, so, um, is there anything that you want to identify as being particularly important?
Um, no, as it is really, just as it is at the minute, so, uh, and, and I suppose in some areas, it, when you look a bit further forward, it can look a bit empty, but we also know that there's quite a lot coming forward on the sort of government's programme and radar, which then basically will go on to the forward plan. So we need to be quite careful not to overload our agendas, uh, for the fact that we do know that care at the minute is in a bit of a swinging mode in, well, either going forward or on hold.
Anybody want to ask anything about either of the two, two reports, adults or health scrutiny? No. Okay? If, if that's the case, then we're required to do two things. The, the board's requested, um, to determine whether it's satisfied with the activity undertaken, um, since the twenty fourth of November by adults and health. And secondly, the board is requested to determine whether it's satisfied with the planned work programme. Um, there's a proposal that the board is satisfied with the activity undertaken, um, and the planned work programme for both. So if, if you're in favour of that, please indicate. Um. Okay. Those against? No. Um, abstentions? No. Okay, thank you. That's that item dealt with. And then the final item, item fifteen, is for information only. Um, the overview and scrutiny management work programme is set out before us and is for information only. Okay? Unless there are any amendments, um, and none have been put forward, um, then that's it. Thank, thank you for your attendance. And this, a lot of, all the work that we've done will go to various committees, including to the executive. So, yep, thank, thanks, thanks for coming.